All right. A reminder, everybody wanting to add either her name through the list of public invited to be heard, raise your hand now. If you don't get on the list, you won't be able to speak during the first round of public invited to be heard, but you will be able to speak at the end of the meeting. Everybody gets three minutes, and then after that we'll cut you off. But anyway, approval of minutes, so I have a motion for the approval of the January 20, 2020 regular session minutes.
No approval.
All right. It's been moved by Dr. Waters and we seconded by Councilmember Peck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes unanimously. And just by way, Marsha Martin, she's not present only because she's not feeling well. So, she's ill. Next, gender revisions and submission of documents, motions directed to city manager to add gen items to future agendas. Do you want to say or do anything? Dr. Waters?
Yeah, this is not, this is not a direction to staff. It's really just to confirm with council members. In our Friday retreat, I brought up the topic of the 529 jump program and what I think the school district needs in order to get behind that the way we'd like them to, and that that would require us basically backing the kindergarteners and then doing the outreach. Mayor Bagley has agreed to work with me on that outreach.
Yep.
I've spoken with former council member Finley. She's willing to help with that since that was kind of her project. I just want to make certain in this setting that I'm still good to go with that, and I just don't want to surprise anybody.
Yes?
I think you're good to go.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thanks. You're good to go.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on. City manager, do you have a report?
No report, mayor, council.
All right, great. You need, no special reports or presentations tonight, right? All right. Let's go ahead and move on to first call pool invited to be heard. Again, you have three minutes. Address the chair, and we'll go with Regina Chaney first.
My name is Regina Chaney, and I live at 416 Main Street. On November 19th, 2019, I filed an open records request with our city clerk for emails to or from Councilwomen Peck and Christensen using their personal email for city business. I recall at the time Polly said she had six emails from her personal account, her city business, and Peck said she had none. During the clerk's first round of investigation that concluded 12/12/19, the findings were 1,615 emails, 177 of these messages were under legal review. The second query by the city clerk completed 12/27/19, revealed that there were 2,043 emails sent or received by Peck or Polly. 359 of these were documents, 10 messages confidential in nature or otherwise falling under an exception to the right of inspection under Cora. There were still 177 messages under legal review. The third and final response to my Cora request came on January 21st of this year. That review has been completed and addressed the 177 messages still under legal review. The total number of emails from Peck and Christensen isn't zero or six, it's 3,658 emails. Why is that? As recently as November 24th, 2019, I'm here five days after my complaint was filed, Christensen again sent an email to a private account saying, "I'm writing you on my private email because it is more convenient." Nowhere in this email does she actually give the recipient her government email address. Why is that? If she means by convenient, it's under the public radar. That's true. It's inconvenient to use one email address for your business and one for your personal. Well, I bet every one of you has two email accounts. Citizens have a right to expect ethical behavior from our city council, a manner that will preserve or restore the public's trust in government. We're talking about 3,658 emails here. Ethical violations erode public trust. Ethics regulations effectively inform officials what conduct is permitted and prohibited in public service. I think the entire city council knows that use of personal email for city business is prohibited. However, without a means to enforce the ethical requirements, the regulations become largely meaningless. That's what we have here. Why is that? Because there are no consequences, nothing to deter further use of personal email accounts. There has been absolutely no ownership by Peck or Christensen of this abuse of public trust. There has been no ownership of anything, no public apology, we've seen only indignation. I call on city council to show Councilwomen Peck and Christensen that there are consequences, and I demand a public apology.
Thank you. Kevin Carter?
That's Kevin Gertner, but I want to hold you accountable for my poor handwriting.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, each and council member, for your service to the citizens of Longmont. And with that, I think we all recognize that leaders are held to a higher accountability and responsibility, and with that comes ethical behavior. And my question to the city council is, what are you doing to address the lack of an ethics committee and the lack of an ethics process, especially in light of this revelation of the violation of the Sunset Act with regards to emails? Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Stover?
Hello, I'm Justin Stover. I live at 2410 Wyngan Drive. I am here today to talk about, I guess, item number 11B, the Peppler Neighborhood Concept Plan Amendment. Today, I'd like to urge you to vote against this amendment. Just the ethics violations that happened through the whole planning process for this amendment should make you stop and think. I have provided evidence of these ethics violations. It's sickening. The planning department, I believe, has just tried to ramrod this through. It's unacceptable. The developer has said many times in these meetings, and they're here tonight, that 100% engineering has already been done for this project. That's not an excuse to ignore the concept plan and what is promised in that concept plan to the community, especially around Prairie Village. It's not an excuse. If they didn't 100% engineering work, that's on them. We do not need to accept this plan change. What they have come up with and offered the city is two relatively useless pieces of land to try to satisfy this statement, the concept plan. It's not anything that can be used for civic purposes as dictated in the concept plan, and it's egregious. It's untenable. What they're doing is just ramrodting this entire thing through, and I'm done with it. I'm sorry, but as council members, like, you guys need to look out for the community, all right? It's not just about the developer. The developers coming here and trying to give you two useless pieces of land that the city is going to say, "We can't do anything with," right? Of course, every department in the city is going to look at these little tracks and say, "We can't do anything with." Did the developer come up with anything new? Not in your agenda, not tonight. Nope, because 100% engineering has already been completed. That is not an excuse just to approve this project going forward. They have a responsibility to the community around Prairie Village and to the city residents for land donation, for civic purpose, all right? And what they're offering is nothing. They're hoping that the city turns it down. They're hoping that we turn it down. I'm not going to stand for it. I think it's wrong, and, you know, I've already provided the city planning department with all the evidence. I've provided some of the council members here today with some of the evidence of the ethics violations of our planning department to get to this point. It's untenable, and it's not right. Do not approve this concept plan change. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwayne Leese?
Hello, my name is Dwayne Leese. I live at 2686 Pearl Howlett Road. I came to, to thank the city for the tagging abatement program. We had a tagging on the back of our building on the corner of Longspreek and Main, and I had spent probably about two, about four, maybe six hours just looking into how to get rid of the tagging and working on it. Finally got a response, and the gentleman came out and did it. But what my thinking is, is that there should be a very obvious and easy way for someone such as myself who can afford to pay for this service to be able to contribute to the city for the cost of what is essentially a valuable service to myself. I don't think it should be something that should be charged to every person in the community because some people can't afford it, but having the city not tagged is of value to all of us. I think it's extraordinarily important, and I want to thank you all for the work that you do, and hang in there, keep working hard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leese. All right, let's go on to the consent agenda. Don, Mr. Don, city clerk?
Mayor, item 8E, Resolution 2020-17, has been removed by staff from the consent agenda and will be brought back due to an error in one of the attachments. So, 8A is Resolution 2020-13, Resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city acting by and through its water utility enterprise and the Northern Colorado Water Conservancy District for location of a camera to monitor the St. Brain Creek. 8B is Resolution 2020-14, Resolution of the Longmont City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Boulder County and the city of Longmont for the environmental sustainability matching grant program. 8C is Resolution 2020-15, Resolution of the Longmont City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between Boulder County, city of Boulder, city of Longmont, city and county of Bloomfield, town of Erie, city of Lafayette, city of Lewisville, town of Superior, town of Nederland, town of Lyons regarding the Boulder Area Trails Mobile Application Project. And 8D is Resolution 2020-16, Resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and State of Colorado Department of Labor and Employment, Division of Oil and Public Safety for compliance with the Elevator and Escalator Certification Act.
All right. Dr. Waters?
I move the consent agenda.
All right, it's been moved. The consent agenda has been moved by Councilman Waters and seconded by Councilmember Peck. Any debate, dialogue, questions? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. That's enough. Yes, we're done. No, so that passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to ordinances on second reading and public hearings on any matter. First is 9A, ordinance 2020-08, the built-in ordinance authorized the city of Longmont to execute a lease extension of real property known as 1140 Boston Avenue to Longmont Winair Company. Are there any questions from council? Does staff have a report, anything like that? All right, see, none. Let's go ahead and open this for public hearing on ordinance 2020-08. Would anyone in the public like to speak on this matter? All right, see, no one. Let's go ahead and close the public hearing. Can I have a motion? All right, Councilmember Peck?
I move 02020-08.
I'll second that. It's been moved by Councilmember Peck, seconded by myself. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, passes unanimously. All right, no items have been removed from the consent agenda, so let's go ahead and move on to general business. 11A, DSC and Creation Station space needs.
Mayor Bagley, members of council, Joni Marsh, Assistant City Manager. So, the item before you this evening is a request for council to give direction regarding the Creation Station, which is the little building attached to the Development Services Center. Used to be a print shop for the city. Community Services has been using that at the direction of council. Council actually voted and made a motion four years ago. At this time, we're really out of space at the Development Services Center and are looking for places to put staff, which don't exist. So, we have spoken with Nancy at the library, Karen Roney, as well as Jeff Friesner at REC, and taken a look at what that programming looked like, and whether or not they would be able to relinquish that space, and they have determined that would be reasonable for them to do so. So, we're just asking tonight for council to give some formal direction if we could move forward with moving into the Creation Station with Development Services Center employees.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Councilmember Peck.
Just a real quick question.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez, for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Just a real quick question, prior to the Creation Station being a print shop, was it at one point a morgue for the city?
Mayor Protem Rodriguez, you are correct.
Okay, I just wanted to put that, because I'm a little bit of a history.
I don't like to emphasize the creepy nature of.
But I like to. Anyway.
Good argument, Josh.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be in support.
Thank you.
I would move an amendment to make that the new council offices. I'm just kidding. Dr. Waters?
Was it also used as a makerspace in conjunction with the library?
You know, I think at one point there was some use going on in that space prior to really the conversion to legitimate programming that went from the library and the Recreation Center, yes, for sure.
So, from one extreme, from a morgue to a makerspace, it's pretty versatile space. So, the one, the one point I would want to make, I understand it has not been utilized well as a makerspace, but I do want to make the point that the library is, we are overpopulated for the capacity in the library, in my opinion, as our liaison to the library board. It is the reason we're going through our feasibility study. And just a reminder that as we, as we receive the results of that feasibility study, we've got, for people who care about makerspace, we've got a series of meetings scheduled now through the rest of this month and into March. That feasibility study, I assume we're going to get it by the end of April, maybe? And that's, and I think that's a pretty close timeframe. And I'm assuming that we'll see in that feasibility study some recommendations or possibilities for a state-of-the-art makerspace in conjunction with what a 21st century library should look like. So, I just want to make the point, as I drive by that, or you walk out of Ziggy's having met with somebody for, you know, some issue, and I look across and I see that space and think about what we, what we could be doing with the, kind of with state-of-the-art makerspace for our creative class in Longmont. And I support, you need this space. I'm going to vote for this. But I want to make the point that we need space for those members of our community who have talents to bring and ideas to, around which they want to create, and I want to keep that high on our list of, or at least high visibility and high on the list of priorities as we go forward with the feasibility study.
All right, Councilmember Christensen?
I understand we're all kind of, all the city offices really need more space. I do think this is a good use of the Lashley Street Station because it'll help, it's right up the street from, it's very close to the elementary school, and it's also right up the street from the youth center, so there might be some more synergy to be gotten between those two places as well. So, I do think it's a really good reuse of this, and I'm glad I also appreciate what Councilman Waters is saying, the library really also needs space. So, we're just going to have to figure out how to use our money wisely, but I think this is great because it is right across the street from the Development Services Center.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to allow staff to go ahead to change the use and occupy the ex-morgue of the city. So, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, that motion carries and passes unanimously. Let's move on to 11B, Peppler Neighborhood Concept Plan Amendment. It's continued over from 11420. I believe staff has an update on discussions pertaining to that little handwritten questionable phrase, so give us an update.
I'm correct, and I'm going to ask Don to make his way up closer to me so he can help me fill in the blanks. So, obviously, there was a plant note that existed regarding the development of this property, and there were some concept plans. I think it was ambiguous in terms of what was actually contemplated in there in terms of the plant note, and there was a number of questions. We had, per council's direction, we had entered into conversations with the developer of that site, trying to find a solution based on some of the ideas that the council threw out during the previous conversation, and some ideas that I had worked out with Don, and we had real time in there. And, you know, we were, we were moving through that very slowly. The conversations were difficult in terms of what we were trying to accomplish. To be completely candid, on Friday of last week, we received a letter from legal counsel representing the individual, and we were actually prepared to come in tonight to postpone this item to date certain, March 31st, so we could have the time to do the, a fair amount of legal research to really evaluate our position. Prior to this meeting, we had a meeting with the applicants, and what we were trying to really work on was trying to fit in four deed-restricted, single-bedroom affordable housing units, and that was something we talked about, and then the question comes in, what is a civic purpose? I think what I was trying to really work off of is that the council has set a goal of affordable housing being important to us, and the civic purpose was of providing affordable housing. And evaluating that concept, we were getting into a number of sit-back issues. There were issues related to how the parking was going to be structured, and it just started becoming more problematic. Literally, a few minutes before this council meeting, we agreed to, with the developer, to essentially take the square footage that would have been associated with those one-bedroom, single-family units at a rate of $3.75 a square foot, which is consistent with other things that I'm working on related to the Affordable Housing Fund. They would then just pay us an equivalent amount for those units, which amounts to $21,000, and would then be placed in the Affordable Housing Fund to be used for the purposes established, which is to provide affordable housing to our community. And so, from my perspective and working with Theresa in this conversation, we feel that it really, the civic purpose that we're satisfying is that we're actually putting additional funding into the Affordable Housing Fund in order to help us provide affordable housing to our community. Granted, it's not, it's got to be accumulated with other funds, but that's where we are today. Council can consider that option based on where we are in the conversations. My opinion is, is based on the amount of legal research and the ambiguity in the plant note and what we have to work through, we think that is an equitable way to resolve this issue. Be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Harold, these affordable units, are they going to be always affordable, or are they going to be, when they're sold, be sold at market value?
So, because of the issues in terms of placement with the setback, there's not going to be affordable units. They're going to pay us $3.75 a square foot.
I misunderstood.
To account for that piece.
Okay, I misunderstood. Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
I realize that this will not please everybody, and that who lives in that community who are expecting some civic element in that community. Unfortunately, because of the way this contract was written a long, long time ago, people, nobody's here, some men, maybe children, but this contract was not written in a way that was very clear, and therefore, I do think that because we did not, it was not specified how much land or the location of land, I don't, I think this is probably a good deal because this does serve civic purpose. It doesn't turn over, this was an agreement that gave the taxpayers, some land was secured for the taxpayers of this city, and I'm not willing to turn over taxpayer land for nothing. So, the taxpayers are getting something for this at large. The people who live in that neighborhood are not getting something particular, but they're particular to their neighborhood, but as citizens of this city, they are getting something in return, which is some affordable housing units that you'll be able to, you get for this payment in lieu. So, I would vote for this. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. So, is there a payment in lieu or some sort of agreement concerning the regular portion of the development, not the two lots that were designated as civic usage?
So, a little bit of history on that property. When that property originally came in the development process, they made the contribution of land which currently houses Spring Creek and Fall River, which met the affordability, the affordable housing requirements for the broader development of Prairie Village. If they had have put those four additional units, it actually would have been beyond, I think, the required affordable housing piece. Council actually voted on saying that they had satisfied their affordable housing requirement based on those original land donations in a previous action. This is really above and beyond that.
Okay, and so, in essence, the development has satisfied, according to applicable ordinance now, according to, you know, at least council's decision.
Correct.
The inclusionary requirements. And so, therefore, the proposal on the table is that these two small outlots, if you will, will then be a payment in lieu kind of concept.
Correct.
Towards the affordable housing initiative. And as such, because of where we're at in the current economic market for providing housing in our city as well as regionally, any sort of contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund is, to me, a civic contribution, and much more usable than, say, 5,000 square feet of what would be considered pocket market at best. As I said jokingly to the mayor, I'm like, at the last conversation about this, is no, it's not much better than most people's backyards as far as single-family detached homes are concerned, as far as the size. And I think the problem really lies with the non-prescriptive nature of the original writing of the civic contribution. It did not prescriptively say a certain amount of square footage or even a usage of that donation. And I think that's where we really get into the weeds here a little bit as far as what the Planning and Zoning Commission has to decide on, as well as what we have to decide on here at city council. And I think that overall, allowing the contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund is probably the best way forward considering the utility of what's been proposed.
Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. I get the concept. I'm not sure I get the number. So, I know whatever you're working on, you backed into a $3.75 per square foot for the number of feet. I think the combined, what was the combined?
5,600 square foot.
But the two parcels. What I, what I am wondering about is that you've been working on something, but we do have a number in our ordinance, in inclusionary, inclusionary zoning ordinance for a payment in lieu of $7.62 or $92 per square foot as a payment in lieu.
Yeah, we didn't look at that because we had already, they had already satisfied that component.
I get that. I get, I get that. I'm not questioning the, over time, the serious commitment the developers made to land donations and what we've been able to do with it as we're, as we are moving people into the fall room apartments as I speak, or, yeah, at this time. But it still begs the question, if we're, if we're going to do this in the name of a cash donation or contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund, why we would not defer to our ordinance of $7.62, $92? Thank you.
So, $7.90 per square foot for finished market rate for sale housing, and $1.90 per square foot for finished market rate rental housing?
Those are the numbers I recall. I thought I was not quite recalling, but the finished market rate housing is $7.92 as opposed to $62. I still wonder why. I understand that's more money, that some, from a developer, it's also more money and greater civic value. Why not that number?
And I think part of it was too, is that was sort of, when I looked at it based on the $3.75, that was raw land, and that's, that's how we applied the raw land component to this. And so, that was the genesis of the $3.75.
Counselor Peck?
Thank you. This is actually, my statement has to do with the developer. When we got this in our ordinance the last time, according to our council com, we had two sections, one on east, one on each side of this development that you were gonna donate. I was not, I was not happy that the developer came up and at the last minute said, oh no, it's only gonna be one part. So, everybody was taken aback really, both staff and council in this last minute update that we didn't have a chance to look at or even discuss in our ordinances or in our council com. To me, that is unacceptable. If a developer is going to be bringing something to us, they need to do it in time for the council to be able to look at it, to study it, to understand what's going on as well as staff. So, I just wanted to put that out there that we need to have more respect for staff and not just pop things in on them at the last minute, especially at the council meeting. So, my last statement.
Part of the other question is, I think if it was deed restricted rental, not for sale, is what they were looking at, $1.90.
And I've got a question. What's the city, what's the city code on PUD now? Do we want to, do we allow PUDs? Would we, did we take action? How does, how does that work now?
Mayor Bagley, Don Perchett, Planning Manager. We allow planned unit developments today and someone could apply for a PUD zoning and come in with an application for that.
Specifically, how is this property zoned today?
Today, they are zoned, it would be commercial, I might zone, one is zoned commercial, one portion of it, the other portion is zoned residential mixed neighborhood, which is the.
So, council took action to make this piece of property zoned, right?
Correct.
So, the PUD plan, I mean legally, I don't think they owe us anything. And so, them being willing to pay $21,000, we did away with that PUD. It's a new owner. They've got used by right, they've got commercial and residential zoned lots and so, they're willing to, I mean, I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but I mean.
That's not the city's position.
No, I understand. What I'm saying is, but we don't have a PUD on this property right now. We do have a PUD on this property?
The city's position is that we do.
No, I know the city's position is that we do, but my position of looking at it is that $21,000 to get out of a legal quagmire where their position would be that they don't, $21,000 is a good, I mean, I look at both sides and everybody's got a good argument and they're willing to write a check for $21,000, avoid legal fees and move forward with the development and we get our affordable housing and we don't have to spend any more time on this. I'm all for it.
You were touching on some of the questions as to why we were gonna need to delay it to the 31st.
Right. Okay. Well, we don't have to now. I mean, unless we decide to or, yeah. All right. Do we have a motion, one way or another?
Mayor.
Yeah.
Make a recommendation that if the council chooses to choose the option that city manager presented, you would want to make a motion to remove that note from the concept plan with, but condition upon the payment of the $21,000 to the city of Longmont. Should we do that first?
Go ahead, Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I would move to remove Note 12.
Note 12.
Note 12 with the condition that we accepted $21,000, what's the exact number? $21,000 even?
Twenty-one thousand, twenty-one thousand, correct.
Twenty-one thousand even as a contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund.
And Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We, it is a public hearing item that we would need to open, so just letting you know.
We'll do that. We'll do that.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
But we can vote on that first before we, we have to vote on that? I don't think we do. I mean, we can vote on that and have the public hearing on, no, public hearing first?
Thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing for Orders 2020-07A and Orders 2020-07B and we'll postpone voting on this particular motion until after we've had a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Council members, I would still urge you to reconsider what I've heard tonight. You guys made a promise to that neighborhood, to that community, to the city and I appreciate the fact that the civic purpose would go to affordable housing or to Affordable Housing Fund, but Councilmember Waters is correct. You know, why the $3.00 or whatever cents per square foot? Do it like you normally do it. If you feel like that's the right way to go, it sounds like to me with this whole process that the postponing and at least till March 31st or whatever that date was, to figure that out, to make this consistent with whatever other donation in lieu that you guys normally do on these types of developments, I mean, it should be consistent. All right? I mean, I think that it's wrong. I think that people made decisions in that neighborhood based on that concept plan, based on what the city said it was going to be and now it's something completely different. I understand there's new zoning and there's all sorts of stuff that's happened in the past years. I get that, but I'm just asking you to do what's right. Do what's right for the community surrounding that project and do what's right for the city of Longmont. Taking $21,000 just, to me, isn't enough. I mean, it's not consistent with any other donation in lieu or land or whatever that's called, right? It's not consistent with what you've done before. And this developer, D.R. Horton or its subsidiary, DHI, I mean, they had the money. I mean, why are they nickel and diming the city? They're just trying to get around this because they already have 100% engineering design drawings ready to go and, I mean, that to me, it's insulting. It should be insulting to you and it's insulting to the city. So, there's another way to go about this. I understand that we, that you guys wanna make a decision, but go back and ask for something else. I mean, when you brought up the, Ms. Bagley, when you brought up the fact that they had two lots and then they came up right at the end and said, oh no, we only meant one. I mean, is the $21,000 only for one or is it both or, you know, like, I mean, it blows my mind how non-transparent this entire process is. I mean, I honestly believe that the planning department, and this is my personal opinion, I'll state that for the record, but I think the planning department promised them that they could get this concept plan note taken off and that's why they went ahead with 100% engineering design and everything. I mean, the transparency here is terrible. The ethics violations from the planning department trying to get this railroaded through to your chambers to get this voted on, I mean, it's really sad. I love the city. I don't love how this process has gone. It's not right. I'd urge you to tell them to go back, rethink it, make it, if they're gonna do a donation in lieu, make it consistent with what they're doing and, or what you're doing in other projects and call it good. All right? Don't just take this to make it easy.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead, do one else? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing? Eugene May?
And Counsel Eugene May, City Attorney. Just a couple procedural things. So, this is first reading. We continued it at the last meeting on January 14th. Hearing Councilmember Rodriguez's motion, so there is an ordinance in the packet, there's two ordinances. A has just a single condition. If you wanted to add the $21,000 to A, it effectuates the removal of Note 12 requirements, cement requirements we met within a year. If you were to add the $21,000, then we would have an ordinance to come back on second reading and we would modify that ordinance depending upon the motion.
So, we're only voting on one or the other?
One or the other.
Right.
B had multiple conditions. That was the landscape easement and developer maintained part.
Mayor Proton, do you wanna redo your ordinance with a motion to pass Orders 2020-07A with your changes?
Yes, I move Orders 2020-07A with the condition that the $21,000 contribution to the Affordable Housing be included as a condition to 2020-07A.
I'll second that. All right. Any additional comments or questions from council members? All right. Seeing no further debate, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. The motion passes six to one, or I'm sorry, five to one with Councilmember Martin absent, which I should have announced, but you got that right, though.
I got it.
All right. And then with Dr. Waters dissenting. All right. Let's move on to 2020, or Item 11C, Legislative Bills Recommended for City Council Positions.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Sadie Seater, Assistant City Manager, and I have four bills for your consideration today. They are, I just handed them out to you, but they have also been posted in the designated spot and on the web. So, the first bill is House Bill 201192 concerning the use of money in the Petroleum Cleanup and Redevelopment Fund for development of fuel cell electric vehicle projects. Obviously, this, so this bill basically would say that we could pull any kinds of money that comes out of the public safety funds for oil and gas cleanups to be able to be used for this kind of innovative work on electric vehicle projects since this really supports the council's sustainability goal. Staff recommends that City Council support 20, House Bill 201192. Senate Bill 20124 concerning adding the public school facility construction guidelines as a requirement to consult with the local electric utility. Our electric utility, LPC, thinks this is a good idea to get in at the beginning of these kinds of construction projects and so therefore, city staff recommends that City Council support Senate Bill 124. Senate Bill 151 concerning the regulation of the regional transportation district. This one's pretty tough because it really requires a whole lot of new things of RTD, which of course, I think we think that needs to happen, some additional auditing and some other things, just as far as transparency of the operations of RTD. But at the same time, the way that the bill is written is pretty bureaucratic and has a whole lot of reporting requirements that might actually not get you there. So, several of the organizations, transportation organizations are planning to oppose unless it's amended. I think the concept makes sense, but we are unsure that the method makes sense. So, we would like to just monitor this for a little while.
I was just gonna mention something on that one. Go ahead.
And then the last one, Senate Bill 2153 concerning creation of an enterprise that is exempt from the requirements of Section 20, Article 10 of the State Constitution to administer a fee-based water resource financing program. This one would basically pull different fees and general funds to create a revolving loan fund, which doesn't really make a whole lot of sense when we are the ones that are planning for our own future and our own water utilities. We would encourage everybody else to do the same and so staff recommends the City Council opposes Senate Bill 2153.
So, this came up with the mayors and, or the mayors and commissioners committee, the Senate Bill 20-151. All it's doing is adding four new positions to the RTD Board. It's going from 15 to 19, which, what?
I suppose.
Right? Yeah. And so, so do I. And so, I mean, I know that there was some talk at the Metro Mayors or the Mayors and Commissioners Committee or the MCC because I know that there were allies who were championing the bill, we didn't want to hurt their feelings and people were kinda hesitant and, but at the end of the day, I personally think that what needs to happen, and again, I think they need to redistrict, like, just like we do at a state, national level, RTD, the RTD Board, keep 15, but adding more, subtracting more, unless they redistrict to make it proportionate, there's no solution. So, going from 15, you know, disproportionate seats to 19 is just going from bad to worse. And so, I actually moved to be opposed Senate Bill 20-151.
Counselor Repack.
I agree with the mayor.
So, that's a second. That's called a second.
I'll call that a second.
All right. It's been moved to the second and so, myself and Counselor Repack.
So, NADA, the Northern Area Transportation Authority, also opposes this because of the addition of new board members. But the point here in this statement that reporting audits, I also want to say that NADA is giving a very deep audit of RTD. Some of these things we're already going to do, we don't need a bill. So, that's my opinion.
Mayor Bagley, members of council, certainly from RTD, that's what we've heard, is that all of the stipulations of the bill are already things that are required of them and so the only real change is the board member change.
Right. So, I mean, I don't know why we were, I mean, anyway, I know why we were hesitant, but I still think we should express concern. So, there's a motion and a second. So, the motion is to go ahead and direct staff to oppose Senate Bill 20-151. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Cool. So, that motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Martin absent. We still have three others, however. Do we have a motion?
Counselor Repack.
I move the slate of bills minus SB 2151. How's the staff recommendation? As recommended by staff.
I'll second that for you. All right. Been moved by Counselor Repack, seconded by the mayor. Any further question, dialogue, or debate? Counselor Christensen?
No, I was trying to fix my.
All right. Dr. Waters?
Just to clarify, we are, we're talking about supporting the two bills and the staff recommends we support and opposing the third.
Correct.
Yes.
All right. Seeing no further discussion or debate, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That passes unanimously with Counselor Martin absent. I do have one other question. Where have we, did we take a position on Senate Bill 93?
Hang on, one second.
That's Mike Foot's arbitration bill.
I don't think so.
I just want backup from council before I do something.
Council has not taken a position on 93.
Right. So, I guess the, I don't know why, so the Metro Mayors Caucus, which I usually don't go to, because we can talk about that privately if you like, but anyway, the Boulder County mayors are, have asked that I, so the way the Metro Mayors Caucus works is by consensus and if five or less, if less than five mayors don't oppose it, then there's a press release that basically says the Metro Mayors Caucus is against it or for it or against it. So, in this particular case, for some reason, the Metro Mayors Caucus was coming out asking for a consensus vote opposing Senate Bill 93, which basically just sets arbitration appointments, which I really don't understand why this rises to the importance of, I don't get it, but I do know it's really important to the other mayors in Boulder County and they've asked that I join them in opposing their opposition and I was gonna do that.
What is the arbitration for?
So, the, it's sex assault victims? Okay, do you want, can you read, can you pull it and just let us know?
Mayor Bagley, I attended the Colorado Municipal League Uni Caucus today. I have no discussion about this bill.
But like I said, it's strange why this would be an issue of debate.
This is the Consumer and Employee Dispute Resolution Fairness Act concerning protections related to mandatory agreement provisions in and connected with enacting a Consumer and Employee Dispute Resolution Fairness Act?
Close. Keep going. Not you, me.
Yeah. There it is. The bill next, the Consumer and Employee Dispute Resolution Fairness Act for certain consumer and employment arbitrations. The act prohibits the waiver of standards in it for and challenges the evident partiality prior to a claim being filed. It is mediation is what it looks like, because it's required mediation.
That's right. So, basically, it's basically saying you can challenge on an arbiter based on bias and whatnot. Again, it's not, it's a big enough arbiter, but it's important to somebody and it's really important to the other mayors in Boulder County and they're asking, it's important to Mike Foot, and they're asking that I join them just to make it so that the Metro Mayors Caucus does not have a consensus to oppose this bill. Has anyone opposed? Dr. Waters? Is Mike Foot sponsoring this? Yes. This bill. So, he's asking the mayors to oppose the bill? No, no. Metro Mayors Caucus came out to oppose it and the Boulder County mayors reached out and said, hey, Mayor Bagley, we need a fifth. Vote with this so the Metro mayors don't have a consensus, so there's no position. It just goes away. So...
So the council could support the bill, for example, or not oppose?
Or not even do anything and just tell me it's okay to add my name to the list, which I could do, but I, we have taken a position on it and I don't know a lot about it.
And Mayor Bagley, in reading this, and you all may remember that at the legislative dinner, Senator Foot did discuss this bill with you just briefly around the idea that it provides the right of the party to challenge the arbitrator, right? Because oftentimes arbitration is binding and that's that. This gives another opportunity, I think, for people to work out dispute resolution.
So if we support what our mayor is asking, it would simply allow the bill to go forward and be heard without the Metro mayors expressing their opposition? Correct.
Yes.
Thank you. So they just, the mayors simply don't want the Metro Mayors Caucus to oppose the bill.
So the city of Longmont does not have to support the bill?
No, we're not. This is not, this is just, anyone have a problem?
You're just checking.
If I oppose it?
No.
Okay. Anyone?
I just had a question on what the status is. So is it in committee? Is it on the Senate floor?
I literally have no idea.
It is in judiciary committee.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and seeing no opposition, I'm going to go ahead and send out an email just saying that I oppose the opposition. So, all right, cool. Thanks. You're going to oppose the opposition? Yes. Then again, man, we'll just, we'll, not even support the bill, just oppose the opposition so Metro Mayors Caucus doesn't have a consensus. All right. So let's move on. Anything else on that or other issues? All right. Let's move on to final call, publicly invited to be heard. I just want to point out, scouts, that you are seeing one of the shortest city council meetings ever. And so someday you're going to be, and so someday you're going to be sitting on city council, running for mayor, whatever, and you'll be like, wait a second, I thought it was supposed to be way shorter than this. But that's not going to happen. So I'm just warning you now. So let's go ahead and do final call, publicly invited to be heard. Anyone want to speak? All right. We're going to go ahead and close final call, publicly invited to be heard. Let's go on to mayor and council comments. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I want to respond actually to Regina Cheney and Justin Stover. Last, at the last council meeting, I made a motion that we move forward with getting a facilitator to facilitate an ethics and rules of procedure meeting among council. So that is already in the works. We get it that we need help and an ethics committee. So the other thing that I want to explain is about emails. First of all, I have milled out over four and a half years that there are 3,000 emails. But the core request is for everything that is on the city server. If it's on the city server, it means that it has my city of Longmont address. Now, I may have gotten, have gotten many emails from people to my private email address, but I forwarded those to the city server. That's why you see my private email address along with whoever wrote me. And we're all like that. I mean, I've seen core requests from the mayor, from Councilman Waters, and they send it to the city server as well with their city email address. Those did not come from the Indra server or Google server, because I don't have any of those, which is what I told. And I sat down with the city attorney and we looked at the ones that he had questions about and I said, release them all. The Longmont Observer has released a lot of my emails, so if anybody's interested to see, it's kind of boring, who emailed me and what I said. Councilwoman Martin has put them on all social media. So anybody who wants to go read my emails, they're fine. You can go read them. I'm not going to apologize because they're not on my personal email. They are on the city server, which is what the core request was for. They were business that I forwarded to my city servers so they would be transparent. There were no emails that anybody got off the Indra server or the Google server. They all came from donpecklongmontcolorado.gov. So there you have it. Transparent. They're all on the city server. You can go read them. Thank you.
Mayor Porte?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. This is just a note for my fellow council members as well as the staff that there's a death in the family and I'll be out of town Friday through Sunday.
Sorry to hear that. Dr. Waters? Just for the purpose, for the sake of my own clarity and how I approach this issue of emails, there have been several core requests that people are interested in my emails, text messages, calendar. So it's been my understanding that if there is an email on my private email account that has to do with city business, that's part of the public record. So I'm just asking our city attorney, is that, am I correct or incorrect? You are correct. So whether I have or have not forwarded, and I do the same thing when I have my wits about me copying my email, my city email account. But if there's been correspondence that I didn't think was city business, so I didn't, any of those that have anything to do with the city of Longmont would be part of that public record, no matter what server they're on. Correct?
Correct. Location doesn't matter. It's about the subject matter.
Okay. I just wanted to, just to be clear. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right. City manager remarks?
No comments, Mayor and Council.
Eugene? No comments, Mayor. All right. Let's go ahead and adjourn. Actually, can I motion adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Anybody opposed to adjourn? All right. It's been moved and seconded. We're adjourned.